Good evening. Welcome to our August 25, 2025 School Board meeting. We began earlier this evening at 5:00 and met and closed. And so we're now ready to begin the open portion of our meeting. I would like to say welcome and a special thank you to Rockingham Academy for hosting us here this evening. This is my first time having a school board meeting here, and so it's really nice to be able to come and just be in this facility. It's a great school, and I hope that those of you that don't know anything about Rockingham Academy sometime get an opportunity to hear about all the wonderful things that happen here in this building. At this time, board members, I do believe we need a motion to modify our agenda so that we can go back into closed session after, excuse me, after the public portion.
I move we amend the agenda to add a closed session at the end of the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Board members, any questions or comments? All those in favor of modifying the agenda to return to close after, at the conclusion of the public portion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes 5-0. The next thing on our list is a moment of silence if you would like to join us for that. Thank you. Next on our list, we invite you to join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. The next thing on our agenda this evening are public comments. We have several public comment speakers signed up. We, each speaker is recognized in the order listed on the signup sheet and is limited to three minutes total. When you have 30 seconds left in your time, a little timer or sound will alert you to let you know that you are down to your last 30 seconds. And we'll begin this evening with Nicholas Zimmerman.
All right, making sure we're good. There we go. Good evening to each and every one of you, members of our school board and guests, parents and family members within this room. My name is Nicholas Zimmerman, and I am currently a family and consumer sciences teacher at Elkton Middle School, FCCLA advisor at Elkton Middle School, as well as assistant cheer coach at East Rockingham High School. I come to you this evening first with a couple of thank yous and then a concern. First, I would like to thank Holly Cave for coming and being with us on our first day of school. We appreciate you being in our building. And Chair Horst, I would also like to thank you for pioneering the remote workdays that we have coming up for teachers and educators. And I would also like, in that same token, to ask my fellow educators and professionals within the teaching community to make sure that on those remote workdays, we are using them as remote workdays as outlined. This evening, I would also like to bring to your attention a concern I have regarding the field trip policy this evening that you all are to vote on. I know that this has been a heavily debated topic, an issue within our local community, and I would kindly ask you to consider the possibility of the following. Coming up in November, we have a teacher workday, and I would like to ask the possibility of you all holding a special meeting on that day in collaboration with our fine arts department within our division, as well as our career and technical education, to further discuss and deliberate on this important policy. As we know, policy is needed to guide the framework of our division and what we do as teachers, educators, coaches, and sponsors of organizations, including our CTSOs. However, I do not feel that either one of the proposed policies put forth may represent the very best of what Rockingham County can put forward. The first proposed policy outlined potentially limits based off of biological sex for sponsors of field trips, meaning that both biological sexes must be represented on those field trips for sponsors where students are attending. The second proposed policy may give too much leeway and at the same time may make things too closed off while also ensuring that students and staff members have the necessary coverage that is needed for field trips. I kindly ask that you consider this as a possibility coming forward. The last thing I would also like to bring forward on behalf of students and family members within the FCCLA and athletic community is our rooms app that we are using for the division. I would ask you to look at a more effective option for us and kindly ask for feedback from teachers and students and staff and parents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joni Lamb.
Okay, okay. He was trying to sabotage me. Hello, good evening, school board members, Dr. Shiflett, members of the community. My name is Joni Lamb, and I teach at Turner Ashby High School. I am here also to advocate for the field trip policy and an opportunity like Mr. Zimmerman talked about for possibly those of us that do these overnight travel, that have gone on many of these trips for years now, to be able to meet with you and provide some perspective of what this policy change could potentially do and the impact of it. You know, for a successful school system, I think we need to look at what opportunities we can increase the opportunity for our students to thrive. And I do see with both of the policies a potential to restrict that instead of being able to encourage that. I was trying to really quickly this evening, sitting back here before the meeting started, just to count up the number of overnight travel opportunities I've provided for students, and I should have counted up even the number of students even, if I had had the chance. But in my 11 years of being here at TA, I know at least I can count 33 overnight travel experiences to at least, I think, sevens different states. And in my time of taking students to these places, there have been many opportunities where it was the very first time a student flew. It was several opportunities that it was the very first time the student went out of the state. And while I definitely think that safety is of the utmost importance, I also think that putting tougher restrictions on each teacher to be able to take travel into consideration and all that goes as part of this may, just needs to have an opportunity to meet with us and discuss it further. I know you've heard from many advisors and CTSOs and otherwise, many parents. I will just advocate for some parent concerns expressed to me that it will increase the burden financially for their students. I took students to the National Fall Institute, which was in California last summer. It was an incredible partnership with FCCLA and Disney Leadership Institute that they offer, and the students had to fundraise for me as well as themselves, and so the consideration of having to fundraise for two chaperones plus themselves. Now, very fortunately, I was able to be reimbursed for that cost out of our county funds, and so hopefully that will allow me the opportunity to take students this year. But I just wanted to say that I appreciate your diligence and guidance, but then just ask if you can provide an opportunity for us to share the limitations that we feel this could provide. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb. The next speaker on our list is Greg Smith.
Good evening. My name is Greg Smith. I'm here with my wife, Misty. We're hoping by now you've received the email we sent to you, the board, on Wednesday, August 20. We're here tonight because we are deeply concerned about how our daughter, Rowan, and several of her teammates were treated by their coach and how administrators at Turner Ashby and within Rockingham County Public Schools have handled this situation. In June, we brought forward serious and specific allegations about our daughter's experience during the 2024-2025 basketball season. We raised these concerns both verbally and through detailed written communication with school administration. We have followed the proper channels at every level, but the responses we've received have been unclear, inconsistent, and dismissive. We are simply asking for answers to direct questions we've been raising since June 5, questions that could be answered if asked. We provided specific allegations and examples of how players were treated. We even identified who brought those concerns forward and made it clear that they were willing to confirm their statements if asked. We've since followed up with those players, and they indicated they were not asked any of those key questions during the investigation. So we are here in front of elected officials still asking the same questions. How can a thorough investigation not include those basic and specific questions? How can administrators make informed decisions without gathering critical information? How can administrators make informed decisions without gathering critical information? And if Rockingham County Public Schools believes these comments, these concerns to be true, is this the type of coaching behavior the district is willing to accept, support, and stand behind? As of now, we feel that administration has failed its responsibility to address this situation seriously. Rowan, our daughter, our daughter Rowan, has dedicated years of time, energy, and commitment to the TA basketball program. Because of the way she was treated, she is struggling to decide whether she will return for her senior season. Several of her teammates have already made the decision not to return because of the way they were treated. Rockingham Public, Rockingham County Public Schools publicly promotes a strong stance against bullying and the commitment to partnering with families to create a safe and supportive environment. We are asking you to stand behind those values and most importantly, to stand behind your students.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Smith. I believe the board will look into this matter. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Our next and final speaker this evening is Mandy Leets. Did I say your last name properly?
I'll probably be reading quite a bit because this is a little bit emotional for me, so bear with me. My name is Mandy Kinderleeth, former assistant coach for Turner Ashby Girls Basketball Team. I tried to live my life by principle, always do what is right, and that's why I'm speaking here today. Jamie Cornwell, a childhood friend, teammate, and fellow coach that I trusted and supported, betrayed me. She fabricated a story about me and made false and damaging accusations against me. She used words intended to defame my character and attempted to manipulate and control me with those accusations, and when given the chance to take accountability and make it right, she chooses and continues to choose not to do so. As difficult as that experience was personally, the deeper issue is not about me, it's about what has been done to the young women on the basketball team. They came here to be coached, mentored, and supported. Instead, they were subjected to division, manipulation, unfair punishment, and they were emotionally broken down. They were left carrying the weight of someone else's fears and projections. That is not leadership, and it is certainly not coaching. That is abuse of power. Unfortunately, this pattern of behavior has been allowed to continue. It has been minimized, hidden, swept aside, and excused. But we must ask ourselves, what message are we sending to our athletes if accountability is no longer required of those in positions of authority? A coach cannot demand accountability from players if they refuse to model it for themselves. Repeated opportunities for apology, accountability, and growth have been extended and they have been ignored, and as a result, trust has been broken, trust from players, trust from parents, and trust from one of, from those of us that once believed in the leadership that was presented. The truth is simple. Trust matters. Accountability matters. Integrity matters. These young women deserve better, and this program deserves better, and all of us who have invested our time, our energy, and belief in its future deserve better. I care deeply about TA Girls Basketball and the young athletes I had the privilege of working with. I poured my heart, my soul, and my energy into the program, not for recognition, but because I wanted to make a meaningful difference in the lives of others. To me, coaching has never been a right but a privilege, one that carries both responsibility and honor. I stand here today not out of resentment but out of responsibility. I refuse to stay silent while young women are harmed under the guise of coaching, and I cannot be complicit when there is an opportunity to make a difference. We must demand better for the sake of these athletes, for the examples we set, and for the integrity of our program. Without accountability, there is no leadership, and without trust, there is no team, and without integrity, there is no program and no future worth building. Thank you for your time today. My desire is to turn something difficult into something meaningful for the good of the program, for the growth of the athletes, and even for my friend and former teammate Jamie Cornwell, who wronged me. I still believe she can rise above this. We all stumble, and we all need help at times. What matters is how we move forward, and my hope is that we can choose a path that builds character, strengthens the program, and uplifts everybody involved. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, that concludes our public comment speakers, and we will now move on to our consent agenda. This evening, there are several sets of minutes in the consent agenda as well as bill and mileage and personnel listing for this evening. For those of you that are unfamiliar with the consent agenda, this is just one way to quickly approve any items that we believe will be a five-zero approval. It's just one way to move our meeting along very quickly and to not have to go through each one and have an amendment or have a motion on each one. So with that being said, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Do we have a second? Tie goes to Mr. Cross. Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say yes. Yes? All those opposed say no. Motion passes, five zero. We're now moving on to item six, action items, and there's a number of action items on here tonight. We're starting with letter A, which is the naming of Montavideo Middle School Auditorium. And Dr. Shiflett, I think you have that, or there is a presentation team coming forward. Thank you.
Test, test. All right, good evening. Dr. Shiflett, Chair Horst, members of the board. My name is Jackie Baker, and I'm the principal at Montavideo Middle School, and I am here with Becky Ford, who oversees our fine arts department, to share with you a proposal to name the auditorium at Montavideo. And this proposal comes to us from a community member who wishes to name it after Mac Long, who was a teacher at Montavideo back in nineteen seventy-four, so a little before my time, to two thousand and four, so a thirty-year legacy at Montavideo. And I understand that he built a community, not only within the school but within the surrounding neighborhoods. He shared music not just with the students of Montavideo but with feeder elementary schools, and so we received some letters of support. I also connected with Bob Scott, who is the former principal at Montavideo, who also shared his endorsement, and Becky has a resolution.
All right, so our official resolution is whereas Mac Long served as a dedicated music educator at Montavideo Intermediate School and Montavideo High School for thirty years teaching band and inspiring generations of students through his passion for music, and whereas during his tenure, Mr. Long built strong and lasting music programs that fostered excellence, teamwork, and a love for performing arts among his students. Whereas he consistently sought to provide every student with the opportunity to participate in and experience the joy of music regardless of their background, finances, or ability. Whereas Mr. Long's leadership extended beyond the classroom as he coordinated concerts, performances, trips, and community events that showcased student talent, strengthening ties between Montavideo Intermediate School, Montavideo High School, and the surrounding community. Whereas his influence has left an enduring legacy with many former students pursuing lifelong engagement with music and all carrying forward the values of discipline, creativity, and collaboration he instilled. Whereas he is remembered with deep respect and gratitude by students, colleagues, parents, and community members for his commitment, his kindness, and his belief in the transformative power of music. We propose that the Rockingham County School Board names the auditorium at Montavideo Middle School the Omar Mac Long Junior Auditorium in honor of his exemplary contributions to the students, staff, and community of Montavideo Middle School.
Chair Hurston, board members, I recommend approving the resolution, naming the auditorium at Montavideo Middle School, the Omar Mac Long Junior Auditorium.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Any discussion?
I just want to say that it couldn't have, this came, couldn't have been a better person than name the auditorium after Mr. Long. Him and Margie have been a staple in our community for many, many years, and I'm, only a few people in here know this story, but I'm, I'm, me and my wife years ago were very, I'm going through some financial struggles, and I'm, we had one child, I think, then at the time, I don't know if Judith was born at that time, but we were in need of a car, and it was Mac and Margie who gave us their Ford tow pass to drive around. And if it wouldn't have been for them, we wouldn't have had a car to get back and forth to work. So not only were they just incredible people at Montavideo Middle School, but they're just incredible people in our community altogether, so I can't be happier that we're naming this after him and have an opportunity to be on the board, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Anyone else? Okay. We have a motion to approve the resolution, naming the auditorium at Montavideo Middle School, the Omar Mac Long Junior Auditorium. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. Motion to pass this resolution is five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We plan to have a celebration, so we'll share the details when we plan that.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Carrie Gray is on her way up because she is going to present for action items the CTE Health and Medical Sciences textbook adoption.
Thank you. Good evening, board. Chair Hurst, Dr. Shiflett, I bring before you two recommendations for textbooks for each of our two new health and medical science courses. For the intro to health and medical sciences, the committee recommends approval of the DHO Health Sciences textbook, and for the medical terminology course, the Medical Terminology for Health Professions. Happy to answer any questions.
Chair Hurston, board members, I recommend adopting DHO Health Sciences Ninth Student Edition and Medical Terminology for Health Professions for CTE Health and Medical Science Courses in grades nine through twelve.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Do we have a motion to follow his recommendation? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Second? Thank you, Ms. Burgoyne. Is there any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the textbooks for our Health and Medical Sciences classes, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes, five zero. Thank you, Ms. Gray. Mr. Justin Moyers is coming forward to do the next three items, and we'll let him walk us through those things.
Good evening, Chair Horst, members of the board, Dr. Shiflett. I have three different amendments to discuss with you this evening. The first amendment is for the approval of a bonus for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. This was money that was given to us by the state, and we gave the bonus as of August twentieth, and so we're asking for an amendment of our FY twenty-six budget of one million two hundred sixteen thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Chair Hurston, board members, I recommend approving the budget amendment that will appropriate additional state funds received for a retention bonus paid to all full and part-time contracted employees as of August first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett and Mr. Moyers. Board members, do I have a motion to follow the recommendation? Thank you, Ms. Laura. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Board members, is there, or are there any questions or comments?
So how much is the bonus?
Well, that's what I was just gonna-
It was six hundred dollars for full time and three hundred dollars for part time.
Did you, did you say they've already been paid this bonus?
They have.
They have? Well, wonderful. That wasn't gonna be my question.
So don't get too excited. You're not getting another one, right?
You've already received your bonus.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor to approve the budget amendment for the additional state funds to go to a retention bonus, please say yes. Yes? All those opposed say no. Motion passes, five zero. You can keep rolling.
Keep going? Okay. The second one is for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, and this budget is an amendment that covers the non-cash lease expenditures that are now required to be recorded based on new accounting standards, and that total is nine hundred fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. So just to briefly explain, these are to recognize new leases that we entered into last fiscal year. We, we have already budgeted for the cash that we have spent for those, but we have to recognize the rest of the cost of those leases over the next three to four years. And so this is the, that amount of money, but there will no be, there will be no additional cash that is coming from our budget. It is strictly an accounting thing.
Chair Hurston, board members, I recommend approving the budget amendment that covers the non-cash lease expenditures that are now required to be recorded based on new accounting standards.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do we hear a motion to follow? Thank you, Mr. Cross. A second? Thank you, Ms. Burgoyne. Any questions or comments for Mr. Moyers or Dr. Shiflett? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes? All those opposed say no. Motion passes, five zero.
One more. All right, so this is also for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. This amendment will allocate additional funds for the increased expenditures for food service in fiscal year twenty-five. These expenditures will be covered with operating revenue hopefully in future years. So that total is nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This will come from the cafeteria fund reserve, which we have built up over the past several years, and then it will cover a variety of different expenditures, and I'm happy to answer questions on that one as well.
Chair Hurston, board members, I recommend approving the budget amendment that will allocate funds for the increased expenditures in the food services in FY twenty-five.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do we have a motion?
Move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the budget amendment that will allocate funds for the increased expenditures in food service.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's like a game show up here this evening. We were just saying, Ms. Burgoyne and I. Mr. Cross gets the second. Any questions or comments?
What was the reason for the increase? So it's several different reasons. The first reason that we're taking the fund reserve is we're not generating enough income through this EEP program to break even, and so that goes into the shortage of expenditures. We've tried to, we have the last couple of years of balanced budget, and we're just not generating enough revenue to do so. So we've underestimated some expenditures to make the balance, the budget balance, and then we're coming back and fixing it later. So food purchases is up, part of that's participation, part of that is we underestimated to try to make the budget work. Health insurance was up one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is strictly a participation thing from our employees. We had more employees that either opted to take health insurance this year or their coverage was different. We had machinery and equipment additions where we had purchased tables for Elkton Middle School. We had additional commodities that we have received from the state, but we also have to recognize that as an expenditure of purchased services. We had non-cafeteria supplies that were increased. That was also because of participation. And then workers' comp insurance was another line that was an increase. The reason for that increase was because in prior years, our operating fund has covered that, and I have moved that to the food service fund for that, for them to cover that for their employees. And then the final thing was just food service wages, and we just underestimated that slightly. So those are explanations for those, but the reason it's coming from fund balances, like I said, federal revenue just is not enough to generate for us to break even. We hope next year, with going back to free and reduced lunch, that we will, food service will be able to operate on its own.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, board members?
Yes.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes, five zero. Thank you, Mr. Moyers. Mr. Reed is making his way forward. He knows he's next. This is a bid recommendation for the Pleasant Valley Elementary School addition.
Yes, Chair Horst, Dr. Shiflett, members of the board. The bid for the addition at Pleasant Valley Elementary was specified and advertised. We had two general contractors respond with sealed bids. Our recommendation is to award the contract to the low bidder, Nielsen Builders Incorporated of Harrisonburg, in the amount of eight million five hundred and forty-eight thousand. This will make the total project budget nine million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred dollars.
Chair Hurston, board members, I-
Chair Hurst and Board members, I recommend awarding the bid for the addition at Pleasant Valley Elementary School to the lowest bidder as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do we have a motion to approve?
I move with all the superintendent's recommendation to award the bid for the addition at Pleasant Valley Elementary School to the lowest bidder as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Burgoyne. Are there any questions or comments?
Steve, thanks for all the work you put into this project. I know we've been talking about this for a little while now, and so thanks for your expertise and putting into it and all the work you do for us here in the county.
Yeah, as you all would notice, the playground has been moved in anticipation of this project starting here in the next month or so.
But you're gonna put it back up, right?
The playground has been moved.
Not just taken down and-
Been moved. It is operational as we speak.
Excellent. The kids are, I'm sure, happy about that. Thank you for getting back to us. What's the project completion timeline?
The substantial completion of the majority of the project will be such that it will be ready to open for next school year. There is the possibility that the four classroom addition will linger into the fall of next year, but after talking with Dr. Shiflett, it was determined that those four classrooms will probably not be needed for next school year, but the rest of the project, substantial completion will be prior to the next school year.
What's the amount of capacity that we're adding?
It should give us capacity that we have four classes at each grade level or about 500 students.
So that would be the total of the school once this is completed?
That would be the total once this is done, yes.
Any other questions, Board members?
When, isn't VDOT, they're going to be doing like a roundabout right there? Like, what's the timeline on all that?
Yeah, so the last that, the conversations we had with VDOT is that they will start the bridge replacement and the roundabout late fall, early winter of this year. And it will actually go about a year past our substantial completion before it's completed. They will be using part of Pleasant Valley's property as a laydown area for that project, and we will be getting another entrance when they're done with that also, one to Early Road.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of following the superintendent's recommendation to award the bid for the addition at Pleasant Valley Elementary School to the lowest bidder as presented, please say yes. Yes? All those opposed, say no. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Reed. The next item or final item on our action list for tonight is the field trip policy. Ms. Tenell is on her way up.
Chair Hurst, Dr. Shiflett, members of the Board. At the last board meeting, I brought you a proposed field trip policy, and I know you've received a lot of feedback on it. So I'm coming tonight to take action if you're ready to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Tenell. That remains the, the question of the evening, doesn't it, Board members? I don't know if we're ready for action or not. It seems like we, I had asked for Draft B to be added for consideration, and that is one, it's in the board docs. I think most everybody that's in this room has seen drafts A and B. I think there's quite a bit of feedback that we have collected from conversations, phone calls, meetings with teachers, emails. Board members, is there anybody ready to move on this tonight? Or do we need to workshop this some more?
I was still getting feedback today from people. I even reached out to some people for feedback, and of course, we've gotten feedback this evening. I do not want to vote on this tonight. I think it's valuable to get more feedback, but then that begs the question, what do we do with things that are upcoming? Obviously, it would just go back to the original policy for the time being. So don't everybody rush to get your field trips done. But, you know, I, I think, I, not say in a year, maybe, maybe next meeting is what I would like to see. And I, and I love the idea of getting people together. I mean, if we don't wait till November to do that, I'd be happy to go to each school and get their, their teams together at each high school and figure out something out. So I do not want to vote this evening.
I am concerned with waiting, and I should have asked our clerk this earlier because I know I'm planning on a trip on September 11th, and I'm seeing that it's not on our agenda. Do we have a number of, of trips that you're just holding and not bringing to us? So, and how many of those need movement soon? I mean, like, I know there's at least four schools planning on going on the September 11th trip.
So if we don't pass one tonight, those, those field trips would come to us on September 8th, and they would fall under the current policy, as would all, all field trips, as Ms. Burgoyne said. Don't rush us with your May requests for September 8th. I know some of you teachers are really great at planning far in advance, but I think, is, is that suitable? Is that too confusing to keep, I, keep working on something? Follow the old, I mean, you follow the current policy until it's replaced?
It's, it's not problematic for me. It's really a matter of, Dr. Shiflett, whether or not that would be a recommendation, whether you feel like that's feasible with schools waiting. I don't really know the timeline of, of that. Kaitlin may know a little bit more.
How many trips do you know off the top of your head? Do you have, between now and, I know, I've got two, between now and November? And do they? And do they go like past the first of the year?
So what are we looking at if we vote on it on September the 8th? What, what effective date are we looking at? Would it be effective because you're saying there's field trip September 11th? I missed, I couldn't hear down here what you were saying a minute ago. Were you saying that if we make it effective, or we have proven on September 8th, it would affect those September 11th field trips?
I think the way that it should work is whatever is approved on September 8th follows the old policy, and anything moving for, like, anything moving forward.
So we haven't approved that field trip yet?
We haven't approved any field trips this year for the school year yet. Oh, I see what you're saying.
So...
Right, that's where we need to have conversation. Yeah, are we gonna approve a new policy on the 8th and then have that take effect on all of the ones we approve? I'm in favor of postponing past the 8th so that we have an opportunity to get out and talk to some more teachers. Talk to our, we've been invited. I don't know that we want to wait until November. I realize that's a really great invitation from one of our teachers, yeah, Mr. Zimmerman, but I don't know that we want to wait that long to have that meeting. But I do think maybe September 8th, that's a pretty fast turnaround to collect, and we, we might just need to have a work session as a board and come away having workshopped something and get a draft back out, so.
At this point, I feel like even if we were to vote on something tonight, we'd need an effective date on it because the current, the policies, both policies that have been proposed, that's the word I'm looking for, both proposed policies include a training component. And we don't have any training, we don't have a training-
We don't have a training program set up yet.
And there's also background checks. And getting those turned around can be time, it can take some time. So I, I would think we should postpone the vote on this, and then when we do vote on it, have an effective date of at least a month in advance to give folks the chance to get background checked and let, let it, let the process get up and running. Does that make sense?
Can I ask, is, is there anything in B that we're missing? I mean, if we was considered the, the option B tonight with it, I'd, I'm fine with there just being two chaperones there. Doesn't have to be the same sex. I think that was kind of what we were looking at at first because we wanted to make sure the kids and teachers were protected. But if we have two, I'm okay with that. That seemed to me like the sticking point.
I liked Plan B, but then when Mr. Nathan, I forget Mr. Nathan's last name, he didn't like either one. Can, can I get you to come to the podium?
I missed what your issue was with the second one, so I'm glad that she's bringing you back up.
So I think regardless of both policies, I think with the second policy, I think that the, the point, Mr. Cross, that you were saying regarding the gender, I think that is a valid concern. I was kind of thinking about this, and when I got my master's degree, I was actually looking at a school board policy for a division, and this was several years ago, and it was about this. So I think that, that A is very constricting with regards to the gender. I think that needs to be considered. I think with policy, B, it's saying, you know, two chaperones. What does that two chaperones look like regarding boots on the ground in terms of execution? And I know some of that goes to executive committee, Dr. Shepherd, and then translates into what's actually implemented for the boots on the ground. But I know that a lot of you have been very diligent about having conversations with those of us that would actually be on the front lines, you know, implementing and being impacted by that policy. But I think it would be beneficial for you all to get, you know, a group of us together to really come up with the best policy for, for us in Rockingham County Public Schools.
One, one thing I will say, Mrs. Zimmerman, that I think all of us have talked with teachers over the last few weeks on this policy. So we, I know I've spent time on the phone. I know Ms. Cave, I know Ashley has, and Ms. Hurst, I'm not sure, I'm sure you probably had to. So we've, we've been talking to teachers for the last couple of weeks on this. And I'm, so I don't know if we need more time to continue to, to meet, but if, if, I'm okay to vote on B tonight, but it's, it's up to the Board what you would like to do.
I think maybe what we need are some reassurances and some conversations. And one of the things I would say is oftentimes when we're, what I notice on our end is that oftentimes we're approving field trips where multiple schools are going to the same convention. They're going, you know, they're going to the same place. So it might be one teacher from Broadway with three students and one teacher from Spotswood with four students. I think one of the questions I've heard from Board members is that counts, or that's not a question. In our mind, we're going, that's two chaperones that are Rockingham County Public School employees. That's two to the seven students that are there. There should be, we think, collaboration among colleagues in order to save the division money because we also hear you on the cost, which is something else that I think we need to have conversations about with Justin Moyers about what we have in the current budget. He's gonna say no dollars. But we need to have that conversation because one of the things that I do hear from the teachers that I've spoken with or that have emailed is that you're fundraising for maybe one teacher and like three kids, so that's four tickets everywhere you go, and however many rooms that is. And so now we need to fundraise for a potential fifth, which adds to the cost. And so I think that's one of the measures we need to take a look at is, is the school division, are, since, you know, are we gonna take that in stride and say, hey, Broadway, Spotswood, that's two? That's, that's good. We don't need to, you don't each need to get two. That's what I think makes sense. But maybe CTE teachers and fine arts teachers will say, that's crazy. We're never around each other at these conventions. So that's why I wonder if a little bit more conversation is warranted on this subject. And so I would, I would move to postpone our vote until, and the Board can pick the date if you think, that would be my motion. That's what we need to talk about. But my motion would be to postpone the vote until whatever deadline, September. My preference, my, well, it's gonna be a motion.
First, let, let me, let me, just for the record, I did sit down with a group of CTE member, or teachers, and we kind of hammered this out. And I, I think we've, we've come to a pretty good middle ground, but it is just occurring to me, we don't have a training. And we have people traveling in like 21 days, less than 21 days. And we have to get background checks. I think at the very least, we need to either go ahead and come up with the training before we, before we approve the policy, or we need to put a date effective on the policy. And I think we do need more conversation for that. So I'm gonna go ahead and do it for you. I move that we table, no, wait, not table. We postpone this, this agenda item until... Caitlin, help me out, our first October meeting. That gives us a whole month. No, that gives us more, our, our, give me a second. What is, what is our second Octo, our second, this, this September 22nd? I move that we postpone this agenda, agenda item until the September 22nd meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any further questions or comments?
I have a question. So if we postpone this, which I think we will, do we, how do we go about meeting with staff? Like, do we want to try to get everyone together? Or, I mean, we can each take a high school.
We could do a work session.
I mean, I would, I would prefer to go to the school, meet with the staff. I'm happy.
But we could do that as an open work session?
Yeah.
Or we could just-
I think I'd rather swing by Broadway at like 3:30 when I get my kids and, and come to them. What I would prefer.
I'm pulling up the school calendar.
So are you, do you foresee that at that point you will choose either A or B? Or there may be another policy that you come up with? Because my question would be, would the policy then need to come back for information for the public before it came to action? If so, would you be thinking your timeline for bringing it for information would be September 8th if you're hoping to vote for it on September 22nd? I'm just trying to make sure that if it's gonna be a brand-new policy, that it come for information before it comes for action?
I think if there are significant changes made, then we would put it up for information, and then the, the following meeting, so one meeting on information, one on action. If there are minimal changes off of, probably what we're gonna operate off of is Draft B, I think is the general sense that I get from Board members. So if we're gonna operate mostly off of that and only tweak one or two things, we'll bring it back for action.
The motion doesn't state if it'll be an action item or an information item, so.
As far as-
The chair, the chair has the opportunity to do whichever. Discretion, thank you, that's what I'm looking for. I cannot find words tonight.
As far as Ms. Burgoyne's question about whether we do a work session, I'm looking at the school calendar. The soonest there is a no-school day for students and a school-led in-service slash teacher work day is October 13th. And there are no other days off other than Labor Day in September. And so it might, getting teachers to a work session's gonna cause maybe a bit of a strain doing a lot of subs, getting subs to cover classes so that they can come and be represented. So I wonder if there's a way that we, as a Board, can divide up a little bit across the county if we're trying to do this within a month. And a couple of us go, we just, we need, we've got eight schools, four middle and four high schools that we need to kind of divide up. We can go in pairs or however, go after school, go during, we need to work that out.
I will take September 11th with the FFA teachers.
So Ms. Laura will cover.
Because I'll be with them anyway.
She'll be there. Well, I think we need to, I think we probably are not gonna have an easy answer tonight on that, but I think we're gonna try to, we've got a lot of Board members with busy schedules and a tight timeline. So probably what we will do is figure out among the Board who can go where and when, and then email that out.
I, before this gets way out of hand while we're trying to schedule this and schedule that, and what you just said is fine with me, but my, the things that I had coming from, from staff and teachers and concerned chaperones, I don't know that it's gonna be big things that we need to put into the policy, but just that we need to make clear maybe to the public when we approve the policy. And like, if I could just cover a couple of them just really quick. Well, we talked about the cost of the trip, and can the division cover, how can we work those things out? out? You know, I don't think that's a piece of the policy, right? I don't think that's gonna be in the policy. That's gonna be, you know, what, what we just do as a practice, as a division. Um, the other one was PTO time. One of the teachers said that if they grab another teacher as a chaperone, that they have to use their PTO time. And that seems unfair that we would say, hey, can you do us a favor and serve as a chaperone, but we're gonna take your personal time for it. So I think that's conversation that we have to have amongst the board. See, I don't know if that's something that's going to go in policy, but that's something like that they're concerned about. And let's see, um, the chaperones, well, you covered like if there's three from East Rock, two from Broadway, there's a chaperone from each school, they can coordinate and, and so, and that was a piece they asked about and we answered. Um, that piece might go into the policy, but I don't know if it's a good reason for delaying it until October. We may have to write that in there. Um, and then the other question they had was if we're moving to the, um, draft B, we're taking the gender requirement out and adding just two chaperones, can it just be something that's made clear in the permission slips to the parents? That it says, hey, I mean, I don't wanna give you the terminology or whatever that you have to use or the language, but to just say, hey, your student may be attending a field trip where the, you know, the chaperone's not the same gender, whatever. And make it uniform at all the schools. And I want all, and I want every school to be doing something different, like let, let's make it uniform, let's do that. But see, all of those, all of those things I think are really simple conversations that we really just need to have over the next couple of weeks. And those were all brought by teachers. So I don't know if there's like additional, like having a big meeting or, you know, two board members going here and there or whatever. I mean, I haven't had any additional emails that have come in or phone calls that really have been any different than the ones that I got from East Rock the other day when I was there. So I just, in the beginning, this policy was about safety and like how, I mean, how safe are we now? And how long are we gonna, if it's truly about safety, like how long are we gonna delay it? And if it's okay to delay it till, you know, whenever, like is it even, even worth changing? And I think it is worth addressing and looking at, but I just, I'm not sure that all of these reasons that were brought forth by teachers are reasons for us to put it off till into September, October, and I mean, whatever. So I just don't wanna have this huge, big elaborate plan to have a work session and meet here and meet there when really we're communicating pretty effectively with people now. Those are just my thoughts, just in trying to get this thing through. I mean, this is what I've been talking about when we like, you know, we delay and I, and I get it, but I just want, you know, initially this was about safety, so that's why I just, I, I wanna get it done. I wanna hear everybody, but I just, what I hear from all the teachers is, is pretty much the same thing. So it's like, it's valid concerns and pretty uniform from all of the teachers. So anyways, my thoughts.
Ms. Gilkison, could you read back the motion? We have a motion, was it second? Did we have a second? Mr. Cross, I didn't get, I thought, Mr. Cross did second it. Okay, so we have this motion on the floor to postpone until September twenty-second. Board members, let's take a vote. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes five-zero. Thank you all for your time. Thank you for your advocacy. Um, we will, we will work up a plan and see what we can do to collect some more feedback. But I do agree with Ms. Cave, I think some of what we need to provide are reassurances.
Chair Hurst and board members, I'd like to take a moment to provide some highlights of the work that has taken place over the summer as we prepared for another school year, focusing on looking at some enrollment, staffing, facility updates, food service updates, and transportation updates. Uh, so enrollment, uh, as of Friday, was, um, eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two students in Rockingham County Public Schools from pre-K, uh, even including their grad students. And some of these are out-of-district placements. And then also of that eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two, sixty-nine of those are out-of-district students who are paying tuition to, uh, ten Rockingham County Public Schools. Uh, hiring statistics, so teachers, we had a hundred and thirty-two new to RCPS teachers. Sixty-five of those are first-year teachers. Remaining teacher vacancies, none. Excellent job to Dr. Amy Painter and her staff, uh, recruiting and, and getting innovative and creative with their approach. And so, um, as we put this presentation together, we didn't have any teaching vacancies. So really proud of that. I scoured some, um, other school divisions, uh, last evening just to see if they had some vacancies, and they do. I can assure you that there's places out there. But I'm very, very, very thankful for her efforts in doing that and, and, uh, you know, there's really no longer a recruiting season. It's a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day job, right? We're constantly recruiting. I tried to hire a teacher. We didn't need one, but I was gonna hire her anyway at a restaurant recently just because she had a degree and she seemed like a pleasant person and I offered her a job and I had no contract with me, but I was gonna, I was gonna figure out something. I had a pen and a napkin, so, uh, but it's, it's, it's always looking for that, trying to find that right fit. Uh, we have some, do have some vacancies and some paraprofessional, uh, spots, some custodians, uh, food service workers and bus drivers. And we always are welcoming substitute teachers and, and sub-bus drivers. Uh, facility updates, wow, Steve Reed and his crew have been busy this summer. Uh, ongoing major renovations at Elkton Elementary School, I have some pictures I'll share later. Uh, we, they pre-ordered the electrical equipment for Magakieville renovation, uh, completed the design work at Magakieville, uh, replaced the grease and septic at Broadway High School. I don't know what that is, Steve, but thank you for replacing it. I'm sure it's important. Uh, this is behind-the-scenes stuff, right? Completed design work bid, documents at Pleasant Valley, which you guys just approved. Uh, relocated the playground at Pleasant Valley, sewer line at Audubon, uh, domestic water pump at Lacy Spring, uh, hydro pneumatic control at Lacy Spring, primer fencing at Plains, Turner Ashby, resurfaced the track at Magakieville, uh, parking lot, uh, lines at, uh, Plains, Pence, Lacy Springs, Spotswood. Um, there, we're in the process of converting our LED lights at Turner Ashby High School. Uh, lab school renovation, I'll show you some pictures of that as well. Upgraded lighting to LED in gyms at Broadway, East Rock, TA. Developed a sped classroom at Monta Video, repaved the back parking lot at Magakieville, installed playground fence at Mountain View, uh, constructed a sped drop-off, including a ramp, canopy, and bus drop-off at Monta Video. Uh, rekeyed some exteriors, uh, doors at middle schools and East Rock, TA, uh, Spotswood, TA, and replaced some sidewalks at Lacy, Cub, Turner Ashby, and Pence. And some urinal dividers between the stalls at Bubber Pence. Thank you for that, Steve. That's, privacy is important. So, um, and facility updates, replaced the roof at the football field at the, Fieldhouse at Spotswood High School, uh, the roof at Hilliard Middle School, the original section. Um, painted exterior doors at Peakview and Riverbend, uh, mobile unit ramp at Skirting at, uh, Lindville Edum Elementary School. Some interior doors were rekeyed at J. Frank, repaired a roof at Monta Video, uh, entrance at, uh, Mountain View Elementary School, and resurfaced the lower court at Spotswood High School. Uh, did a sink at, in the art room at Elkton Middle, some netting at Spotswood High School softball, and, uh, and opened a doorway at Spotswood Lab School and then replaced lots of copiers, Cub, John, Whalen, Lacy, Peakview, Riverbend, South River, Elkton, Turner Ashby. So, you know, summertime is when, you know, schools are vacated except, you know, front office staff and a few weeks at summer school. So they take advantage of that and, uh, they've accomplished a lot of tasks. So when we, when you folks approve the budget, you know, back in the, in the spring for maintenance projects, here's a whole host of those. Um, wanted to show you, I think I have some pictures of the new lab school space at TA. So there are two classrooms side by side, so the wall there, you see where the, I guess the bulletin board was taken down, uh, was one, one of the walls. And then here's the, the same adjoining wall. So they tore that wall down between those two classrooms, and, uh, that's kind of what the space looked like before they went in and, and put the finishing touches on it, and that's what that classroom space looks like now. It's very beautiful if you get a chance to go out and, and, and see the space, but also, you know, just to check out the lab school. Uh, it's a, it's a very beautiful, um, design. And then also renovations at Elkton Elementary School. Our leadership team, uh, did a tour of Elkton in mid-June, I believe, and, uh, it was, uh, it looked a lot like that. Uh, there's a lot of places like that where they were just tearing it apart and, uh, but then they are beginning to put it back together. Uh, you know, here's a book of sort of a before and after of a classroom, uh, and the library, and they changed some of the, um, egress into the library. So a lot of work's been going on at Elkton Elementary School. Um, we hit, um, one or two little roadblocks over the summer, but, uh, overall, they were able to stay on track and, um, you know, return classrooms that they had said they were gonna return. And Steve, where are we in the process of that? Okay, yeah. So just kind of doing five and six classrooms at a time. And the, the nice thing is we have space at Elkton Elementary School to shuffle students around and it's not really impacting the, the school day. Food service, we have one-hundred-and-ten food service workers across our twenty-three kitchens, and they are ready to rock and roll. They'll be serving thousands of meals this year. Uh, they are phasing out styrofoam and artificial food coloring. And once again, we are participating in the Department of Defense, Department of Defense Fresh Fruit and Vegetables Program again this year. I'm not sure of that connection, but that's okay. Transportation, we have a hundred and fifty-five general education buses on the road, fifteen special education buses and fifteen assistants on those buses, thirty-five special education cars and vans on daily routes. We do have ten double runs, uh, at, at eight different schools, um, Pleasant, uh, Pleasant Valley, Elkton Elementary, Mountain View, John C., John Whalen, TA, Pence, and South River. And currently we have fourteen buses and our vans traveling to out-of-district schools like Charter House, Gov. School, uh, Elk Hill, Keys Academy, Minnick, um, Blue Ridge Community College, JMU, and Virginia School for Deaf and Blind in Vaya. So we have, you know, buses that are traveling daily, uh, outside of Rockingham County. So a lot of work, uh, getting prepped for this school year and making sure that, you know, we're ready. A lot of this behind the scenes, right? You know, we think about that first day of school when kids, you know, come in and, you know, whatever, if they're starting pre-K, kindergarten, what, all, you know, excitement for their senior year. But all these things happen and people really aren't even aware it's, it's going on, but it allows us to do what we're called to do every day, and that's serve our students. So just wanted to give you a quick highlight on what's been happening over the summer. And, um, now that we're three days in, I can assure you we're ready for school. A little late, right?
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do you have any questions about the opening, ready-for-school presentation for Dr. Shiflett? Special thank you to all of our, um, Mr. Reed and his staff for getting everything ready because that was a huge list of projects that you all were, um, managing to get accomplished, and the facilities look beautiful. All right, next up for information is, um, a VHSL update from Mr. Eric Baylor. What's going on in that world?
I'll use my coach's voice, it won't really matter. But I wanted to, it's good to speak to you guys tonight, Chairman Horst and Dr. Shiflett and board, thank you for letting me talk to you. Uh, one of the things I did in putting this presentation together is I asked my wife, a thirty-seven-year elementary teacher, I said, Angie, come check this thing out before, before I go talk to the board about it. And she, she looked at it and she said, everything spelled right, that's good. She said, but boy, there's a lot of discussion in here about transfers. So, um, and, and just to give you a kind of a, a pre-concept of talking about that, uh, we are in the college NIL world and the college transfer portal world, and the hard part with Virginia High School League and the fact that we're schools and we're trying to, to, to keep our kids at our schools, playing for the teams of the areas they live in, is that what they're seeing on TV and what they're seeing in the media and on the sports channels is a lot of discussion about transfers. So a lot of what we're gonna talk about tonight is transfers. Um, I've also got some other information to give you. Uh, but just the, the basic concept of the transfer rule in the VHSL handbook says a transfer should be for the welfare of the student and/or the school system and not for athletic or academic activity purposes. In other words, VHSL purposes. Uh, and so what, what I think has been good about me being in a position as supervisor of VHSL activities when it comes to the rules, is trying to be as consistent amongst our four high schools as possible. But we don't work in a vacuum, so we're always working with schools where students are transferring in and students are transferring out. One of the really good things that we have and that we weren't utilizing, and when I say we, the Virginia High School League across the state wasn't utilizing, and we're doing a better job this year of utilizing, is what's called a transfer verification form. So if, um, if Matt Cross transfers out of, uh, Hurst High School to Burgoyne High School, when he shows up at Burgoyne High School, uh, Ms. Burgoyne is gonna sign off, as the principal is gonna sign off on a transfer verification form saying that Matt Cross is at her school. That form is then sent to Hurst High School, and, uh, Ms. Hurst will sign off on the form saying that's true, or not. Uh, if they both agree that the move was not for athletic reasons and this partic, this particular student is a, an athlete or a scholastic bowl debate forensics person doing some other activity, then everything's okay. If, as some students do in this day and time, Matt Cross says on Instagram, I'll be taking my baseball talents to Martinsville High School next year to play baseball there. If there is something out there, the other school can deny the transfer and say, no, we know this is for athletic reasons. Um, and so what happens then is there's an appeal process, uh, that we'll talk about a little later. But I wanna talk a little bit more about why we transfer. Again, VHSL handbook says transfers aren't for athletic or activity purposes, and then it gives four reasons, not to gain additional playing time, not to play for a particular school coach or team, or to avoid playing or sanctions at another team, or to gain increased media or college exposure. Essentially, we want our student athletes to go to school in the school district they live in, play for their hometowns, and play for their, their families in those areas. Um, one of the changes that happened on July first of this past year to cut down on transfers, uh, to cut down on the recruiting of, of eighth and ninth grade students to come to other schools, is, is basically a new transfer rule that says, and I'll try to break it down so a first grader can understand it, cause that's how I can understand it. If you are an athlete, if Matt Cross makes that move, and he makes it in the middle of cross-country season, and he makes it before the season is halfway over, he can finish out that season in the regular season, but he's ineligible for district, regional, state competition, okay? Without an appeal process, okay? So you could finish your season running, but you can't run in the district championship, the regional championship, and the state championship. Why? Well, if someone is a coach and someone is really proselytizing and recruiting someone, if they can't play him in the playoffs, that kind of defeats the purpose of having an athlete move in. If Matt would move in after halfway through his cross-country season, once he gets to the new school, his season's over, okay? Under the new rule. So there's, he can't even finish the, the second half of his season, and of course he cannot, uh, participate in regional, district, or state, um, play. So it's, it's, it's strict. It was passed with about a ninety percent pass rate at the Virginia High School League of the three-hundred-and-seventeen principals. Ninety-one, ninety-two percent said this is what we want, to cut down on transfers, okay? If Matt would've moved in after his cross-country year, okay? Let's say Matt is a cross-country runner, he moves into a school in December, cross-country's over, then he is ineligible for the fi, the playoffs for district, regional, and state competition the following year, the subsequent year. He can run his regular season, but he's ineligible for the postseason tournaments, district championships, regionals, and so on. Now you say, wow, this seems pretty strict. And it is. And so with that, I- And so with that, obviously, there's, there is an appeal, there are appeal processes, okay? That we go through. That appeal process starts with a district appeal. So if Matt comes in and he appeals that it's a hardship, you know, that there's, you know, that he did not move for, for athletic reasons, the district committee, which is consists of three high school principals from the Valley District, okay? That are not obviously involved, not in the school that he came from or the school that he's going to. So their neutral principals will decide, the first step will decide whether that appeal goes through or not. And district appeals on the playoffs are final. It doesn't go further to the executive committee principals, and it doesn't go forward to a hearing officer. What the district decides is final. So again, it seems kind of harsh, but the idea is to cut down on certain schools across our state recruiting students and bringing them into their school. And if you can't play them in the playoffs, it kind of defeats the purpose of having people, of proselytizing athletes and students, student athletes. All right? Starting on July 1st of 2026, all ninth graders entering the VHSL participating school must live in the attendance zone of their high school in order to be eligible for VHSL sports and activities. This affects mainly tuition-paying students who are out of district and children of employees that get permission to send their school, their kids to certain schools. And the reason we got an extra year was to allow people to get the word out that this new rule's coming on July 1st of next year and to be able to understand it and put it in perspective. So what does this mean? Well, it means that it's not the end of the world here, folks. Students who attend the corresponding feeder school in middle school as an eighth grader for one full year, that's 180 days of school, they're fine. They do not have to live in the school district as a ninth grader because they've established their residence as an eighth grader. They got to be there the whole school year, folks. 365 days, 180 school days. And so as we move into next year, what's happened with this rule and the people who are, who are getting excited about this rule and want to understand it, it's led to more emphasis on a verif- or a rule that's already existing, and that's an eighth-grade eligibility interpretation. So this is the one that affects us right now. And this is the one across the state that hasn't been enforced like it should have been in the past. And to be perfectly honest with you, folks, there's not clear written language in the Virginia High School League handbook that says this. But it basically says, all eighth-grade students, when you interpret three different rules, it says, all eighth-grade students attending school in District A but living in the attendance zone of District B are ineligible for VHSL sports and activities during their eighth-grade year, okay? They can participate in middle school sports. But if you live in Augusta County and you teach in Rockingham and you bring your child to eighth grade at Wilbur Pence, okay? Your child cannot play JV sports as an eighth grader. They can play middle school, but they can't play JV sports. If you live in Page County and you, you teach and you bring your student to East Rockingham, all right? That, that student's got to sit during their eighth-grade year. They'll be eligible as ninth graders if they go the full school year, 180 days, but they have to sit for that eighth grade. Now, in eighth grade, what does that mean? Well, they can't play football, they can't be softball, they can't play baseball, they can't play soccer. They can't play whatever sports, basketball, wrestling, track, cross-country, and, and those various other sports that are offered by middle school teams, okay? So, so this is, this is the big one that the emphasis of the new ninth-grade rule has brought this one to the light. Now, where did I get this from? Honestly, I got it from the interpretation of these three things. Like I told you before, it's not real clear. As a matter of fact, it's not clear at all in our handbook, but they take pieces and bits of those three rules to interpret that eighth-grade rule. So one of the things that I'm pushing for, we have a meeting in September of the supervisors of VHSL activities across the state, there's about 45 of us. We are gonna make a big push to put a clear explanation of the eighth-grade interpretation into the handbook that's plain and simple and clear for all of us to be able to understand, okay? One of the things that I've found out in going back, whoops, I'm going the wrong way. Can you bring me back here, Mr. Gillette? There we go. Hit the rewind button. One of the things that I've found in regard to the eighth grade, this eighth-grade rule or this eighth-grade interpretation, some school systems, and I'll put this before the board, some school systems require a, their employees to either send their, to bring their students to the school that's closest to where they live, out of district. If I'm in Shenandoah County, most likely it would be Broadway. If I'm in Augusta, could be East Rock, could be Turner Ashby, could be Spotswood, depending on where they live. If I'm in Green, it's most likely East Rock, all right? So some, some school systems say, in order to simplify this, your children can only go to school closest to the area you live or to the school you go to work into, okay? So if I'm the principal at East Rock, I took my son Blake to East Rock. He went to school for four years there. I live in the Spotswood Zone, all right? Something to think about right now, the way it works for eighth graders, if they live in Rockingham County. We have a lot of teachers and, and employees and people that live in Rockingham County and that right now can take their students to whatever school in Rockingham County they want to. This applies specifically to living outside of our locality. Harrisonburg, Page, Rockingham, Augusta, Texas, California, Kansas, wherever that might be. Just two additional facts I wanted to throw out for you. It has nothing to do with transfers. I told you a lot of it was transfers. First fact is they've changed the physical form. This is a new state law. The, the old physical, it used to be for 12 months when Matt was getting ready to run cross-country. He'd get that physical, it was good for 365 days. It is now good for 14 months. So when it comes to insurance and copays, doctors and, and parents are excited about this. The potential issue with this is, is that a student could be eligible, if they got their, if they got their, their physical in July, and it was July 15th, they could be eligible till September 14th. And they could have an event on September 14th and be eligible. But when the next event occurs on September 17th, without a physical, they're ineligible. And it could catch a student athlete in the middle of a season. So our ADs are working really hard to make sure they're keeping track of every individual student athlete because the concept of 14 months is great, but it's a little bit of a bookkeeping nightmare for our ADs because it used to just be you had to have one by August 1st of each year. Fact two with, is about false information. I just want to put this out there. On, on your VHSL physical form, this statement is put in there. And that's Section 30 dash 4 dash 3 is a penalty for giving false information. If a student or his parents or guardian gives false information, written or verbal, relating to his or her residence, eligibility, or any other aspect of the rules and regulations, the student will be deemed ineligible at any VHSL school for a period of one year from the date that the information is certified as being false, okay? And that applies not only to sports, but also to activities as well. Fall theater, Scholastic Bowl, debate, forensics, all VHSL-sponsored activity. So it's very important that people are honest, okay? And we're working really hard in Rockingham County to make sure that people are honest about the residence and where they, where they're supposed to be as opposed to where they say they are. I know I've, I've given you guys a lot of information tonight, board. Please feel free to ask any questions that you all have for me in regard to this.
Can you make this presentation available on the website in an easy place for parents to find? Because I think there's going to be, we have a lot of athletes in Rockingham County. And this is brand-new information. Some has taken effect July 1 and some to take effect in 26.
Yeah, in 2000, the ninth-grade rule will take place in 2026. But what's really happened, Ms. Hurst, is that the focus on the ninth-grade rule has brought a focus on to the current eighth-grade interpretation of the rule. So it's my goal to get the High School League to clarify in the handbook what that eighth-grade rule means without having to pull from three different rules to get an interpretation. It's very important that we put something in a handbook that's plain and simple and easy to read. But I'd be happy to, you know, we'd be happy to put this on the website for you.
That'd be great. And your explanation was really good. I think it might even help to direct people to our video recording from tonight so they can hear that as well.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask maybe if we could, um, do, have, have you do like a podcast with, that we've been doing?
Absolutely.
And, and like kind of address a certain issue, maybe even break it down, you know, like you did tonight, so.
I'd be, I'd be happy to do that.
I'm, I don't think, you were the chairman for the VHSL for a while, right?
I was the chair for one year as the principal of East Rockingham, yes, sir.
So you know what you're talking about when you're talking about VHSL stuff for the most part.
I don't have a degree in calculus, but you have to have a close one to be able to interpret that handbook, to be honest with you.
Well, we appreciate you going and advocating for this at the state level.
Thank you very much.
The, I do have one question for you real quick. Did you give a recommenda- what was your recommendation for the board for teachers that are being able to bring their students over to help them out? Is there, is there a way we can help that out? Because it's kind of frustrating that we have a teacher being able to bring their kids to school, but they, they can't play JV that year. Is there anything we can do as a board to help out with that?
Yeah, I mean, so I had a long argument with Billy Hawn about this, who was the last VHSL director. And Billy and I go a long way back to coaching football against each other when I was at Spotswood and he was at Western Abmar. And so I mentioned, I said, well, you know, in my mind, as an ex-principal, it's a nice perk. It's a very important thing for a employee who puts 80, 90 hours a week into the school system to be able to bring their child to that school system. And then I thought that that was very important. His answer to me was, Eric, what if in southwest Virginia, we only let the coal miners go to school where they wanted to go, but we cut everybody off? He said, it's very important for our league that we can't be arbitrary, that we can't say that it's okay for teachers', children to do something that dairy farmers' children can't do or poultry farmers' children can't do. And we went around and round at, we went around and round for probably about 10 minutes. And I gave my arguments about a few perks that we get as teachers. And he went back and forth. We agreed to disagree, but I did have a better understanding of the concept of not being arbitrary. I don't know if that answers your question, but maybe give you some perspective that I got that day.
Board members, anything else for Mr. Baylor? Thank you so much for all you do for our division. And thanks for presenting all of this information to us tonight. We have a policy revision by Ms. Tinnell. She's coming forward to go over that. Believe on administering medicines to students.
Chair Horst, Dr. Shiflett, members of the board, the policy that you have, it's the original Rockingham County policy. And there were some changes to the seizure rescue medications. And so the portion that's been inserted there came from SBMA as an addition to the policy. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about it.
Board members?
I did have one concern from a parent. In the last paragraph, it says, diagnosed with a seizure disorder, may possess and self-administer seizure rescue medication. Actively having a seizure, you're not going to be able to administer any rescue medication. And so the suggestion was to remove that part of self-administration, maybe, I don't know. I, I don't know who then steps in, a faculty, staff, a friend? But obviously, in an active seizure, they're not going to be able to. I think most of those rescue medications are nasal sprays. So if they're carrying that, I, I guess somebody else is going to have to administer that. So I don't know if we can look at that, change it.
I need to look a little bit more at the code. I had heard that concern from a school nurse as well.
Okay.
But I'd need to look at the code and see if that's a requirement of the code. I think the concern was the same of how would you self-administer if you were having a seizure, seizure? And what is the liability of the school system if the student would have a seizure medication that would get out of their possession? So I, I can look a little bit more at the code and see what exactly is required per the code.
Okay. And then, I mean, even if we left it as self-administer, because sometimes early on, maybe you know what's going to happen, you could self-administer. But maybe leave it as, and self-administer as well as other faculty, staff, you know, any bystander could assist in that in addition.
We, I think I had gotten the same, probably same email, same concerns. And I went back and I looked at it, and it, and it says, a student enrolled in a secondary school who has been diagnosed with a seizure disorder may possess and self-administer. So I think it's just granting, like, this would be a one-time exception to our policy, our medication policy, that students could self-administer something because right now, we don't allow them to self-administer Tylenol. Is that, I, I was looking at that because I had the same thought. That's really silly. If you're in the middle of a seizure, you are unlikely to be able to self-administer. But the possibility that you could is there with the word "may." May, may possess, I don't know. So I think that's a great, a great point, and we need to just double-check.
Okay, I will check in with SBMA and ask your question and see if I can get some feedback from them.
I think as a, I mean, I don't have a child who has a seizure disorder, but have been in public safety long enough to know, I don't care who's administering the lifesaving medication, just give it to me. So I don't know how we, you're better at that than we are to word this nicely, so, yeah.
Well, it is a Rockingham County policy. So I think as long as we're not, I mean, we've kept it Rockingham because it's not an SBMA policy. It's just that one insert. So I feel like as long as we're not going against what's in the Virginia code, it is our own policy, and so we can change it to what we want it to be. So maybe I will look and make some changes and send you something if you would like for me to. Okay.
I also have some concerns about this policy. It's my understanding that this is a narcotic, it's a spray, and that NarCam, is it, does not help if they overdose on this? So is there a way, and the way I'm reading this, students can carry this around with them in their backpack? I'm not sure I'm real comfortable with that.
I mean, that's the concern I've heard from school nurses too. I'm not sure how to, how to answer that question in regard to it being a requirement of the Code of Virginia. I've heard the same concern. I don't really know how to address that. And would want your guidance, Dr. Shiflett, on what you think the divide is there between students carrying medication when it's a requirement of code as opposed to some of the nurses, it sounds like they have been vocal in expressing their concerns about this policy?
Yeah, I think we'll reach out to legal counsel and get some assistance from Daniel on this.
Okay.
Thank you, because I didn't really phrase that as a question.
No, but I understood what you were saying, yes, okay.
Anything, anything further for Ms. Tinnell? Okay, thank you very much. The final two items that are in our information list are the Finance Department Staff Report and the Financial Review for July of '25. Those items are in your packet. And that brings us to the superintendent comments. So Dr. Shiflett, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Hurst. Just want to highlight our, our meeting last Wednesday, August 20th, with our board of
with our board of supervisors and the commitment from, uh, their board as well as this school board to continue, uh, pursuing a new build, um, of Mass Nut and Technical Center. And Casey Armstrong and I met on Friday, um, to, uh, have conversations about that process and also the plan for an upcoming, uh, community conversations that we're going to be holding, uh, on September the 10th at Frieden Farms at nine o'clock. Uh, we're sending out invitations hopefully, um, tomorrow about that event. And, uh, Casey and I are meeting again tomorrow morning along with Justin and, and Trish to, uh, continue again, conversations about this process and, and the financing and all the details. But, uh, really excited about the direction that we're headed, so thank you.
Thank you for that update, Dr. Shiflett. All right, board members, this brings us to the end of the night, which is, um, school board highlights, questions and comments. We'll start with Ms. Cave tonight.
Just wanted to highlight, um, time spent at Elkton Middle School on the first day of school last week. I, my husband texted me when I got home and he was like, well, it was probably later in the afternoon. He's like, how was your morning? And I was like, I had the best morning ever. So I just showed up, just, we've got a new principal there and I just wanted to just encourage the staff and him on the first day. And, you know, things are new and different. And, um, I got there about 7:15 because they said that Blue and Gold Drive just backed up and you couldn't even get into the community center down there a lot of times. But, um, that did not happen for me. I got into the parking lot and even when parents started showing up, I mean, they were just, the drop-off was just, it was really, it was efficient. And so they were just doing a really good job there and getting kids out of the cars and into the schools. And everybody was just happy and got to watch a lot of the sixth graders come in and they're just going right to their classes that need help with where they were going. And I heard that there were just, it what looked to be record numbers showing up at the back to school night there at Elkton Middle. And just people curious about maybe the new principal, I don't know, and the way things were going to go. But I, um, this week have gotten messages and texts and emails and phone calls even. Uh, people just very excited about the direction of Elkton Middle. And so, um, I know for really our whole division, it sounded like we had a really, really great, um, first day of school. And, um, I think the idea too, to, to start on a Thursday, um, and just have that first week be two days and, um, was a really good one. So thank you, um, Ms. Abernathy for making that happen when you worked on our school schedule. And, um, it looks like we're off to a really great year. And so I'm excited, I'm excited to see how things turn out.
Thank you, Ms. Cave, Ms. Laura.
Thank you. Of course, we had the Rockingham County Fair and it was great seeing all of our students, um, participate in that and, uh, show how, showcase all their hard work over the year. Uh, and I did take some time in the middle of that to go to East Rock and Riverbend Elementary and enjoy the Rockingham Learns, uh, was it Academy, the Rockingham Learns event, um, for all, for life, that's right, Rockingham Learns for life. And excellent, excellent job to our executive staff that pulled that off. Um, and I believe, was it Donna Abernathy that really spearheaded it? She's saying no, but everybody else is saying yes. But, so thank you to everyone who made, it was a, it was a huge team effort and it was awesome. Um, uh, I, I am looking for a bigger and better one next year, but excellent job. And thank you to all, everyone who made that possible. And, uh, uh, even Dr. Shiflett gave a wonderful speech about not being a sucker. And if you have, right, that's not right. What was, it was your lollipop moment, that's what you. Leave it to me to get, yeah, but it was excellent. And he clearly does a much better job than I have after going on. Is this like our sixth hour of meeting at this point? I feel like we've been meeting forever because we started early and we've still got some more to go. So, um, sadly, to make it even go longer and after all of that, I do want to point out that we talked about Pleasant Valley and the, the rooms not being ready at the beginning of the year, which may put off a lollipop moment in my head, is that right? That's not even right yet, a light bulb. Um, will we need to look at redistricting anytime soon and moving kids into that space? So I'm wondering what our timeline looks like on that. So if Dr. Shiflett could maybe bring us something to the next meeting, that would be awesome.
Yes, I would be happy to bring some information about. What I would like to do is wait until we get our enrollment numbers after day 10 and, and sort of recalibrate and then go back and revisit. I'm not sure how many students, um, with the addition coming to Pleasant Valley. I'm not sure how many students will need to redistrict into Pleasant Valley because we have significant growth, um, up on the hill, Boulder Ridge, and then Wing Gate still being finished. Uh, I think more of the concerns would be Cub Run and Peak View and how do we navigate that? But absolutely, I'll be happy, you know, to bring you something, um, on, on some ideas or suggestions, right? Uh, and that, and yep, and thank you for highlighting. Not sure that would be a lollipop moment, but, uh, that's okay. Watch the, the video at some point, YouTube, check it out.
Video was much better than my rendition of it and I apologize for that, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laura, Mr. Cross? I'm jumping around.
Yeah, no, I'm, I got a few things to thank tonight. Uh, first, uh, thanks to Dr. Shiflett and everyone in the school division for getting things ready for the kids to come back to school. I'm, I've just hearing great things at the beginning of the school year. So thanks to everyone who's gotten, uh, things ready for the, all the kids to come back. And thanks for all the directors and, uh, they came tonight to the school board meeting and talked. So we really appreciate that. I'm, thanks to the maintenance. There's a couple of things that I'd, that I'd been asking for the board for a while was the Spotswood football roof to be replaced. And that got done, so thanks, thank you guys. Thanks to the board for, for making sure that got done. Uh, the resurfacing of the lower tennis courts and the extended protective, uh, netting at the softball field were all requests that I've been trying to get fixed at Spotswood. We're all, we're getting close to that 2027 date of remodeling up there. And a lot of these things will get touched, uh, touched up, but the school was old and it needs, it needs, uh, to be addressed on a lot of different issues. I am also thanks to Chris Hours. I saw that there was 10 extra routes that you guys are doing. So thank your bus drivers for, uh, putting in the extra time and all they're doing. So thank you guys, uh, for all the work you guys are putting in as well. I'm, I do have two requests, uh, for the board and for Dr. Shiflett. Uh, Dr. Shiflett, you said that you are gonna have, uh, continued conversations with M T C going forward and with, uh, the county admin. I would like the board and request the board that we would send Steve Reed along with you as well, uh, to talk about these things. Because he's someone that has known what's going on and knows that he's the, he's the professional in this. I'd like to have him involved. I wish he was able to be that at our last meet, a couple of meetings, uh, but I'd like to have Steve involved in that.
So, so far, Mr. Cross, our conversations have been more about financing and preparing for the September the 10th meeting. We really haven't gotten into logistics of the build and how we're gonna approach it. But I would say, uh, once we get to that point and we're having those conversations, uh, definitely Steve Reed's an expert in that and, um, but we'd love to have him at the table with us for sure, right?
Yeah, thank you for, uh, making sure he's there. I, and I'd like to have an update, maybe I'm put on the, on the agenda for October or November to have an update on the, our new lab schools at Spotswood and T A.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Ms. Burgoyne, you're up.
Okay, I'll try not to be long. Um, I am not sure if this was ever highlighted, but last year, um, Ms. Hurst and I had visited every single school in Rockingham County. And now I feel like I'm already like behind because we have so many princ-, new principals and new staff and things like that. Um, but we were able to visit every single school. We were able to sit down with staff, any faculty that wanted to meet with us and get a tour of the school. And, um, that was, that was really eye-opening, really, really a good time. Um, I'm hoping this year to focus more on my own district, but of course I'm, would love to come to any schools that would, that would like to have me. Um, I do have to say, um, and I've seen our F C C L A advisors have left, but, um, my daughter's favorite booth at the fair is the F C C L A booth because she loves cheese pizza. So we always, we live at that booth. I did want to thank, um, Dr. Shiflett and Principal Liza Kaufman for all of their hard work with the passing of Mrs. Hatcher. Um, the services at John C. were amazing and it was beautiful. And it really shows how much this, our CPS community comes together. There were teachers from every single school and it was just, you could feel the love in the room. It was, it was amazing. Um, I also want to thank the board, um, for revisiting the school calendar. I have had nothing but positive feedback from it. Um, teachers were able to not only stay at the fair with their kids, but the ones that were camping, one of my daughter's favorite teachers, she camps with her kids, they stay in an RV out there. And she said she just needed to take a real shower and just unwind for a couple of days. So I've heard a lot of good feedback about that. Um, so anyway, that is, that was, uh, very much so appreciated. Um, the other thing I want to mention, um, and I've had a few parents contact me, um, but I just want to kind of acknowledge the fact that the kids entering kindergarten this year were the babies that were born during COVID. I know my, my twins were born October 2019 and by February 2020, um, we were quarantined at home. And, um, I remember their very first trip to Walmart because they like completely freaked out. Uh, they'd never seen so many people in the same room, the bright lights. Um, and it was just pretty overwhelming for them since we, you know, couldn't go anywhere for so long. Um, Thursday, at the start of school, I was able to walk my boys to their kindergarten class, help them unpack their book bags, lunch boxes, um, pick their choice for, for lunch on the screen. Um, and a lot of these kids have not had daycare or preschool and have kind of just stayed home. So, um, the reason I'm bringing all this up is I have heard a lot of parents were not allowed to drop their kids off. And so a, as I, as I see my, my friends up here, you know, campaigning and things like that, I think back to my own campaign and, and being a voice for parents. And so as parents have called me and were really disappointed that they didn't get to take their kids to class that first day, um, it kind of hit my, my heartstrings a little bit. Um, because I did get to, you know, I got to take the pictures and do all the things. So I would just ask this board, and I think most of you would agree with me. Um, I think procedurally, um, and not talking policy, but procedurally, I'd like for things to be more similar within our schools. And it breaks my heart that some people didn't get to drop their babies off like I was able to. So anyway, I just wanted to, um, be that voice for parents who, who were really disappointed in that. So anyway, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burgoyne. I will add to that, that it is, it's crazy to think that that was five years ago, the pandemic. And to me, it seems so long ago, but we still will be looking at the effects of that for many, many years. And, um, so thank you everyone for your comments this evening. Um, I'll wrap up just by sharing a couple of, um, fine arts highlights. Um, our, I don't know if anybody knows this, but if you are a part of marching band, um, you are coming back to, to school in July to get started to prep for your competitive seasons. And you, um, sometimes have two to three weeks of band camp prior to school even starting. These camps run from nine to six and kids can average, I learned, more than 80 hours of summer rehearsal. And that is an incredible amount of time. And so even though school's out, um, there's still quite a bit of work going on with summer athletics and fine arts programs are getting ready, um, for the fall. And, um, I also want to highlight again, the middle school summer band camp that was held for the first time, um, in July. My own son attended that camp and loved it, just absolutely, um, had a, a great time. And I just want to say thank you to all of our teachers who provide opportunities over the summers to keep kids engaged, um, in learning and to keep providing these awesome opportunities for kids. Um, that their parents, thank you, the kids, thank you, the division thanks you for all of your hard work this summer. And I am gonna close out tonight just by saying I'm excited for the school year of 25, 26. And I think it's gonna be a fantastic one. Thank you everyone for coming out tonight. Um, sorry, we went a little bit later than, than what we have been doing usually, but I think we had some really good stuff that we needed to attend to this evening. We do have reason to enter into closed session. And so board members, if someone could grab that, um, that motion, I would appreciate it before we adjourn.
I have it. Are we ready?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I move that the board enter into a closed meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.2 dash 3711 A1 for the purpose of discussing and considering personnel matters, including assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, disciplining or resignation of specific employees. The subject matter is board discussion pertaining to specific employees. I also move that the board enter into a closed meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.2 dash 3711 A2 for the purpose of discussing student matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in student records. The subject matter is board action pertaining to student discipline and request for release from compulsory school attendance.
Thank you, Ms. Cave, do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes five zero, we are now in closed session. Thank you all for coming out tonight.